All right, it is June 7th, 2022, 7:30 PM. I'm gonna call the Planning and Zoning Commission. Meeting to order. Members present, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, John Teahan, Bob Shavitt, and Joe Hall. I don't see Rebecca there yet. All right, so first item on the agenda tonight is item D of public hearing, PZ-22-9. Text amendment application pertaining to the regulation of cannabis establishments applicant planning and zoning commission. With that, you take it away, Mike.
So if you look in the application folder, you know, we've talked about this number of times, there is a a revised report memo that I drafted. Basically, when we originally started talking about this, when the the previous acts were passed allowing the cannabis to be something that's legalized in Connecticut, there were laws or language within the law that said that if towns don't establish regulations, they have to be regulated like similar uses. So we would regulate a cannabis facility that sold to the general public the same as we would a Dollar General. And we would we would regulate cannabis cultivations similar to, you know, any other type of warehousing, manufacturing, industrial type use. Which is why we established the moratorium to then be able to work through and see what the state did to create regulations. Actually, one of the things that was within the bill basically limited the number of those establishments to one per establishment type per 25,000 residents, which meant that because Willington was under that, we would have one retail location, for example. They said that that cap would be in place, the state until at least June of 2024, at which time they would reevaluate. Well, two weeks ago today, they passed a new bill, PA 22-103, which removes the 25,000 cap. Which means that as of now, any town in Connecticut can approve locally as many of these establishments as they they wish. It doesn't mean that they'll get state approval, but that buffer that used to exist, which would give us essentially two years to see how we like one, is now gone. So basically, in response to that, to try and understand what this might mean, you know, we don't really know the full extent of what we may may see as far as interest and activity. I took the language that was proposed currently that we had talked about and included in previous discussions in both the, you know, March and April versions, and I added, if you scroll to the bottom, section 3.4, which is essentially a mirror of what the state law used to include before they removed it, which basically takes that cap and puts it into our regulation. So I guess I can leave it there for now. If anybody has questions, we can go through the regulation itself. If you want to kind of get a sense of how we're proposing to to deal with this, but I'll leave it there for now.
Hey, Mike, what happens when that section automatically repeals? That means that at that point, there could be unlimited licenses in town.
So, yeah, and I really put that in there as a as a point of consideration, because you know, if if let's say two years from now, you you approve this and only include that subsection 3.4A, you then have to do an amendment to remove the cap. And so basically, like I said, for the sole purpose of consideration, I included this this clause that would remove that piece. But yes, if on if you approved it as written on July 1st, 2024, that subsection 3.4 just is removed, and we wouldn't be limiting ourselves to one establishment.
That's interesting. That was changed because I'm wondering if it would have changed our discussion when we were coming up with these regulations, Mike.
Yeah, I I think that the state saw the complete nightmare that may have been created by them having to police one establishment per town. The other thing that creates an issue is we issue a special permit locally that that they execute, and then we say, okay, well, we have our, we've issued our one. Let's say that those people decide that they're going to essentially bank that approval for a year or two. And you show up with someone else that wants an approval. We don't actually have one operating, but we've issued an approval on paper, and so they're getting to this chicken and the egg discussion, and I don't think the state is really in a position to deal with that, so they they just removed it.
So they didn't want to regulate one, but now you can have as many as you want.
Right, it'll still be limited by the total number of licenses the state issues, but they they aren't going to going to be looking at if some towns, you know, I think a lot of communities, I think one of them most recently that I was reading about is Bridgeport. You know, if one town decides they want to be the capital of cannabis in Connecticut, and they want to allow everything without permits or something, they're not going to get involved in how those things are cited.
All right, any questions from any questions from the commission? Now, I could open this up to the public. Any questions about this for the public? Yes, Kathy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kathy Demers, 48 Mason Road. First of all, I want to say that I have nothing against the individual use of cannabis, and I appreciate the commission coming up with some regulations regarding this. I do have some questions and comments, if you'll entertain them. Excuse me, on the first page of the of the handout that's available for the public and for planning members, under summary on page one, it says that towns that wish to adopt a townwide prohibition must do so via ordinance through their legislative body. I just wanted to ask if that is the only way, or if the planning commission wanted to change their regulations to prohibit if that was also allowed? Because I've spent some time reading the state statutes on all of this and considering your regulations or our our towns' regulations. So that was one question. On the second page, under suggested draft language, it says new section 11.23. I just want clarification. I believe in our zoning regs, we also have an 11.23 section that is titled entertainment regulations. Is it possible this is a typo? The next section that would be available to write would be 11.25, I believe. So that's just one thing to consider. Then, under definition of terms, under cannabis establishment, it talks about a dispensary facility, which I understand would be for medical marijuana. But I don't see that listed under our definition of terms, so I would suggest perhaps that dispensary facility be added under the definitions, as well as the term grow space, which comes under some of the other definitions under cultivator and microcultivator. It talks about, for example, under cultivator, a person's license to engage in the cultivation, growing, and propagation of the cannabis plant. I guess that should be plant instead of plan, under that cultivator term. But at an establishment with no less than 15,000 feet of grow space, but we don't define grow space. The state statutes do, so perhaps that would be helpful to add to these drafts. On the third page, under section or subsection three, cannabis establishments allowed by special permit. Just some clarification in the table. It says SUP. I'm assuming that means special use permit instead of special permit. It's just not explained anywhere, so just wondering about that. Also, I do have a question whether or not these establishments are only allowed in designed industrial and design commercial, or if they're also going to be allowed in the new strategic development zone. Under 3.1 cannabis retailers, subsection A, all retail establishments shall meet the following criteria. They shall not be located within 250 feet of any child daycare facility or church, and shall not be located adjacent to any park, playground, or public or private school. I was just wondering, we do have regulations talking about alcohol and liquor permits, and the separation distances for those establishments are 500 feet from schools and churches. So I was wondering why it's only 250 feet for cannabis. Also, just the term in that sentence, adjacent to any park, playground, or school, I was just wondering, adjacent, does that mean a lot adjacency? And why is there a difference, you know, and not a distance versus adjacent, just so that's clarified a little bit better in our regulations? Under 3.2 cultivation and product establishment, subsection A1, it says all cultivation shall be conducted within a building. Just wanted some clarification. Is a greenhouse a building? Are we talking just about warehouse-type facilities for buildings? Also, I don't see anything regarding separation distances for cultivation and production establishments. Might be something to consider because one of the big problems with some of the grow, when when people are growing cannabis, is odor control as well as water demands, as you have already identified under the operational plan. But I wondered if we might want to think about having any kind of separation distances between residents and potential cultivation projects, because there could be some some issues with water demand and odor control. And then when we're talking about water demands under 3.2B C, it says that they will have to include management related to water demands, but I wonder how we're going to measure the impact of those water demands on residential wells or aquifers that are along stream belts. We know that a lot of our commercial potential commercial and industrial development areas are located along the Route 32 as well as I-84 corridor, and we have Roaring Brook there, which is a trout stream, and again, some of these, you know, I'm not thinking of microcultivators, but if we potentially have these larger cultivators come in with large growing facilities, just wondering what the water demands would be like and how we're going to measure the impacts, or asking them to tell us how, you know, if there's going to be potential impacts on some of these resources. The other thing I'd like to suggest that's added under that 3.2B would be lowercase e, which would talk about the use and management of fertilizers and pesticides, because there's a risk, even though they may be doing this in an indoor building, if they're using a lot of fertilizer or pesticides, that some of this could impact surface and groundwater, causing some type of pollution. So I think we need to at least ask about those questions when people are coming in from applications. And then the last thing I'd like to just discuss is on the last page. Mike, you were talking about concentration of uses. Just want to get clarification as I'm reading that. Are we talking about whether it's a retailer, a hybrid retailer, or microcult, microcultivator? Are we talking about only one of any of those would would be allowed within that next two-year period? Are we talking one of each type? And then one last, just a comment I wanted to to make or to ask really is, again, has our town land use attorney been involved been involved or consulted on any of these text amendments? Thank you.
All right, Mike, you want to you want to answer as we go along?
Um, I don't know that I caught all of that. I can try to, let me see if we start from the top. So the specific definitions that were, so we can check on the section number. I don't remember when we started, but yeah, we need to tweak that to 1125. If regarding the definitions, they were pulled specifically from the original, when we started this with the moratorium, it came out of that original SB 1201, which I have referenced there, so you know, we can, if we want to add additional definitions beyond what's in the bill and the act, to clarify the dispensary facility, though, I think the point of this was to pull the specific license types that they were going to be issuing from. SUP is is to yeah, it's it's a special permit. So we can, we can remove the U. Cannabis retailers, hybrids retailers, the 250 feet, so generally speaking, when we do text amendments, when they're referred to CROG, we can make things more restrictive, but but in many cases, we don't want to make them less restrictive. So in this case, we can ratchet it up if you wanted to create increased separation distances, but but we would want to do a referral again if we decided to just remove it altogether. So this is, that was just a baseline. The reason for the term adjacent is essentially, again, trying to regulate in some way proximity, but when you start drawing a 500-foot buffer, for example, around a particular piece of property, you know, if you use Phelps Plaza, for example, and it's 11 acres, and if you start looking at where those distances are measured, you know, you may create a situation where it's becoming a little bit overly restrictive. So we used adjacent to try to regulate uses which would be nearby without kind of kicking out parcels that, you know, could be one or two separated or something further down the road. The operational plan, I think she mentioned, you know, any discussion about fertilizers. We could certainly ask about that if we wanted to include something in the language specifically, we could. We could include that in those that criteria. Monitoring mitigation, the separating distances for cultivation. From the things that I have seen, and I'm not claiming to be the authority, you know, a lot of the a lot of the criteria related to odors can be managed through specific improvements within the building and and things like negative pressure air systems, gel canister filters, there's a lot of things you can do if we get to the point where we were approving that type of establishment. And so the point of the odor monitoring and mitigation is to tell them that we're interested in knowing that they're not going to have any venting leave the building, but not specify anything beyond that, because as the technology evolves, we want to be able to just talk to them about whatever solution they're employing, and there are multiple. I think her question about cultivation occurring only within a building. I'd have to review the definition of building and structure, but I think that it could be within a greenhouse. And and so if the commission wanted to specify, it had to be sort of a real frickin' mortar facility, then we would want to, we could clarify that, and I could I could come up with some thoughts on that. The concentration of uses will be, would allow for one of each of those. So that's not what what I included here is a is a deviation from the state language in the sense that they didn't prohibit, for example, hybrid retailers. So we could, we could add something in there if you felt it wasn't clear. But the intent would be to to limit the number of license types for those three categories. We wouldn't limit delivery services, for example. And I'm trying to go through, I don't know if I've missed anything, but I can, I can go through the minutes and try to try to either make some tweaks, or, you know, try to prepare some additions to this based on those.
Get a question whether the land use attorney reviewed?
Uh, no.
Yes.
This, these have been, these, this language has been pulled from basically, it's a it's a combination of a couple of communities that have have approved regulations and also regulations that have been seen to be I don't know what the term is, that well-regarded by some of the regional councils of governments that do the reviews of these regs. And so that's where those have been pulled from. I think the only other question was related to the eligible uses. So they're allowed in the DI and the DC zone. The SDZ is a development, the special development district, so they would have to include this as a potential use if they sought approval when they got through to that step in the process. So they couldn't, they couldn't seek approval under the SDZ and land the zone, and then show up with that sort of after the fact, or or locate it retroactively in a building, it would have to be be requested as part of that process.
One of her first questions too was whether the only way you can like not allow it was legislatively, like the select would have to ban it in the town.
The only way that you can adopt a townwide complete prohibition is through ordinance, and so that would mean you can't have it in Willington. You can't, a lot of towns are doing this in some, at least partially, because they don't want it to be consumed at town parks, for example. So if you want to prohibit it across the entire community, in town parks, and et cetera, that's done through an ordinance. The ordinance wouldn't regulate just specific to land uses, but this commission can't say we're going to prohibit the use and have any effect on how the law is handled on things like town property. So some towns are moving to bring in, to adopt a complete prohibition, which applies to parks, buildings, schools, senior, whatever. And so to to across-the-board prohibit it, consumption, sale, growing, blah, 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 that has to be done by ordinance.
Mike, if if I if I could comment about the greenhouses, as far as I understand, greenhouses cannot be used, they're not considered secure structures. Usually, talking about a grow building usually needs to be something like a Butler Building.
Okay, that's helpful. So, you know, I think that from our perspective, since this is what we've seen, is that the state's moving in a direction of deregulation, so, you know, what may be okay today or not okay today might be fine tomorrow. I, yeah, I don't know that specifically in in the bill, but from our perspective, if the commission didn't want that, you know, we could try to tighten it up so that if the state decides after a year, oh gee, we've got more demand than we have production, and they decide to make producing this easier, then at least we have some criteria locally that wouldn't allow them to just throw up a greenhouse and expand.
Doug. Doug Roberts, I see your hands up.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Hey, a question, Mike, on the towns that have approved regulations, so marijuana continues to be a a cash business, because banks aren't approved to handle transactions at this time. Any of the towns approve it with any regard to like response time from law enforcement? Like proximity from where the place is located to, you know, police. So for us, we don't even have a resident trooper, but it would be the the town sea barracks.
Um, I have, I have not seen anything related to that actually, in either proximity. I mean, there are, there's, there's language in the bill related to the towns assessing these users for certain expenditures in the in the sort of in the beginning. But I haven't seen any any citing criteria related to distance to barracks or or dispatch or whatever that I've seen.
Okay.
Mike, before I go to Ralph, I have one last question. You work in the town hall. Do you have any sense from the select people down there how they feel about this?
Um, I did basically let Erica know that that early on that that we were moving in this direction, because I, you don't want the Board of Selectmen talking about uptown wide prohibition while we're trying to consider regulations. So I basically said, this is what we're moving in the direction of considering, obviously, no idea where we'll land, so that if they if they had a different perspective, or they were going to be doing something else, you know, we be in a position to at least make sure we're not working against each other. So I don't have anything formal from them, but I did make them aware that this is what the commission was looking at.
All right, thank you. Ralph Tullis.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Ralph Tullis, 47 Village Hill Road. Hope you can hear me okay.
Yep.
Okay, good. I want to reiterate Kathy's question about has this been reviewed by the land use attorney? And I know that Mike's response to that was that this was submitted to CROG. I don't know that CROG puts an attorney on each and every review that comes through the door, and I think any new legislature created by this commission should be reviewed by your land use attorney, because in reality, you're creating laws concerning land use. So I think it would be wise to pursue that with any change in regulation. But moving on to other things, I am totally confused between a distinction, this distinction between retailer and hybrid retailer. Because it appears to me, just reading the documents that Mike put out there for tonight's meeting, it seems a retail, a hybrid retailer can sell to anyone, while a retailer can sell only to consumers and research programs. The other difference is that a hybrid retailer can sell medical, while that's not specifically allowed by a retailer. In addition, it appears that a retailer can purchase from a specific list of cannabis-related entities, and a hybrid retailer can apparently purchase from any source, since nothing is specified. I congratulate the legislature on their ability to confuse everybody. On the separation distance, I'm kind of with Kathy on this. I think that we should parallel what we have for liquor. I understand Mike's point. But I think the restriction for the business is 500 feet from the closest adjacent lot line, and not necessarily a 500-foot offset of the facility's property line. In other words, if you had a cannabis retailer in the old bank portion of Phelps Plaza, you might be able to have that entry door 500 feet away from the closest school or park or church. You have a Uh, you have a. Very restrictive limitation on signage. I'm just curious how that squares with the sign regulations. Moving on, forgive me, I'm, I'm scanning my list of points that I picked up out of this. On section three point four and three point five, this is just kind of a, uh, housekeeping thing, Mike. You might consider reversing them. So that. When the time comes to eliminate what you currently have as three point four, you're just dropping what would become three point five and your number sequence. Stays neater. You don't skip from three point three to three point five. The, uh, table used in section three. Uh, needs some dressing up if it's going to be included in the regulations. Uh, I think it needs a title. I think it needs some definitions or key for DI, DC, X. And SUP, which I at first took as what's up, uh, because that's a common slang. Was up. Uh, but anyway, um, I just a little bit. Uh, I, uh, might clarify that that is special permit. Okay, moving down through the regulations here, I have a few more comments. I gotta come back to that one. All right, let's get into the regulations. I'm sorry to, uh. Not have this right at my fingertips. I'm scrolling down through my document here.
Ralph, you need a minute if, if so.
Yeah, what, you can come back to me if you want. I want to hold up the, the process.
Doug has a question. I'll, I'll, we'll come back to you. Just keep your hand up and when you're ready.
All right, thanks. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, go ahead, Doug.
A- another question. Have, have the school boards like weighed in on the, like how they're going to. Deal with this or police it? I mean, they were. They had a lot of challenges with vaping. They probably still do. I'm not sure if, you know, has there any been, has there been any dialogue with? What the consequences would be if. There's dispensaries, you know, opened up in, say, our. Mansfield, Ashford, Wellington. Corner of, uh, of the state. Or do they not get involved until this is passed through the town and then they deal with it?
I, I don't know if there's been any regional discussions related to, to this. You know, as far as, I don't know, Ashford doesn't have, have regulations yet, uh, in place. I don't know, um, what Mansfield has done. But. I mean, uh, is, are you thinking in dealing with policing kids that have it?
Yeah, yeah, on the, on the premises, you know, just the ease of access. That's all.
That's, yeah, so that's where a lot of towns are adopting ordinances to prohibit possession and use on town property.
I don't know. Doug, well, obviously vaping is bad for you, Doug. Cannabis is now medicine.
It's good for you. Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah. You know.
It's, it's all about the tax revenue.
Yeah, the three percent that we're gonna get.
Well, the state gets, I'm sure they'll do well here. And they don't have to enforce all the laws anymore with it.
It's a win-win.
I think I have some of the same concerns you do, Doug.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, from a, you know, I guess you could call it a holistic view or, you know, high level view like, but what are the different? You know. Groups in the town thinking. Cause vaping was, you know, it's not legal for kids under eighteen, but they, at the high school level, they've, they, they couldn't manage it. Um, even with a no, non-smoking policy. I mean, I think they were basically afraid to go in the restrooms because they were. Of this fear of, you know, violating people's rights. So I, I, I don't know. Just. Something else that's gonna raise another layer of complexity.
Ralph, you, you ready?
Um, uh, well, I can add one thing, uh, Walter, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Early on in Mike's memo, there's a statement, the commission has complete discretion as to where, how, and the total number of operations that they wish to permit. I would disagree with that. It's not the commission because the state statute kind of overrides what the commission can do. So we can't make it any, we can't allow a half a dozen at this time. So the commission doesn't have the kind of discretion that that statement implies.
You, you do have, you, you can approve a half, half a dozen.
You can?
That's, that's the, the whole thing is that to, as of May twenty fourth, that, that density cap has been removed. So that's why this language has been added.
I thought it was in, in place for a couple of years.
On the May twenty fourth, the state removed that language from the bill.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
But, but the reason I.
How many licenses they're gonna issue in total, right? Statewide as well.
Right, so. Yeah, it can, you can, you can end up with basically hotspots of these, these uses. But the reason that that lang- that I wrote that in the memo is because through the special permit process, you always have control over those. That criteria. You can, you can decide that it, that it's not appropriate for, for one reason or another. Um, but rather than having the commission try to. Pull from the record to make that decision, we've added that three point four in there so that we don't even have to essentially have the conversation.
And there's one other thing, uh, three point five, Mike, you used the word licensure. In your first statement, I think that's inappropriate. I think it should be a license. License server refers to a restricted practice or restriction on the use of a. Occupational title. Uh, I don't think that's what we're doing here unless. You want to consider the proprietor as having a license for being the purveyor of fine weed or something to that effect. Um, but I think when you're talking about a business, you're licensing, licensing the business, it's not licensure. It's a fine definitional difference between license and licensure. I have to deal with it in my profession. But that, that's a minor. Type, uh, type of graphical thing. I think that's all I have for now, Walter.
Okay, I see another hand up. Is this, uh, Yanira? Or Wolfgang?
You're muted.
Hey, you gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Hi, how you doing, everybody? Uh, I apologize, Walter. It's, um, um, I guess I'm somehow under my. My wife's comment here, um, but my name is Eric Wolfgang Pinto and, uh. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself and, um. Excuse me?
Where, your address, where you live in town?
Sure, I'm, I'm at forty one Sunset Ridge Drive in East Hartford.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, the reason for me, uh, attending this meeting this evening. Um, so again, let me just kind of introduce myself. My name is Eric Wolfgang Pinto. I'm a licensed clinical social worker in private practice, uh, for approximately eight years now. Um, I attended Eastern Connecticut State University for my bachelor's degree. Received a master's in social work, um, from University of Connecticut and, uh, my wife did as well. Um, so. Essentially, my family is part of a group, uh, that will be receiving eight retail licenses in Connecticut. Um, which is the most of any group. Uh, we will be avoiding the lottery. Um, through partnering with Kiraleaf, which is one of the existing, uh, medical providers in the state of Connecticut. I also have, um, David Burn- Bernier on this meeting this evening as well on here. Who will be overseeing all of the, um, eight retail locations that we will be having throughout the state. Um, so essentially we have been scouting this, uh, the state. And, uh, we currently have four locations nailed down, so we're looking for four more. Um, so. Wellington is, uh, very appealing to us at this point, very high on our radar. Um, due to its proximity to Yukon and Eastern as well as eighty-four. And then that being combined with, um, my ties to the area. So it's actually my wife who is the qualified social equity applicant. Who is officially partnering, um, with Kiraleaf from one of their, uh, eight retail licenses that they will have in Connecticut. Um, so. What, what I basically wanted to do in addition to introducing myself to everybody this evening is just to let you guys know that. Um, if we come in, you know, we'll do it right. Uh, we'll do it absolutely right. We have the most experience of any groups that will be. Obtaining, uh, licenses in Connecticut and that's via the head of our group. Who was the president of the Northeast for Kiraleaf. He oversaw, uh, seven states for Kiraleaf, including. New York, New Jersey and Connecticut and Kiraleaf is, um, currently the largest cannabis company, um, in the world. And so he essentially left Kiraleaf to start our group here in Connecticut that he'll. Well, we'll also be receiving a delivery license as well as a micro cultivation license. So our group will have ten total. Uh, my family will have one of those licenses and again, um. Your town is very high on, uh, on our radar for those reasons that I previously, uh, mentioned, but, um. Ralph, just to go back to one of your questions in regards to retailer versus hybrid. So yes, a hybrid retailer is. A retailer that can, um, dispense medical as well as adult use cannabis. So they would have, uh. You know, a licensed, um. A licensed pharmacist on staff. So a retailer is just somebody who would be dispensing for the purpose of adult use, which is what. Um, our eight retail licenses will consist of. But so what, what we wanted you guys to know and I can. Um, going forward, distribute literature to provide evidence to kind of support some of these things, but. Um, that will have no negative impact on the community. Um, obviously the tax revenue will be tremendous that you guys mentioned previously. It'll be. Three percent to the town. Um, there's a rise in the home values in the community. The, we, we've spoken at multiple town meetings already at this point, um, in Torrington and Colchester. As well and, uh, the Torrington Police Chief, um, actually stated that he researched. The dispensaries in Massachusetts and saw no correlation at all in, any sort of rise in crime in those communities. And there's actually a reduction in crime as it, um, takes away from the illicit market. So everything becomes regulated essentially. Um, and then also there's, there's no evidence to support that there's a rise, uh, in use amongst teens. Typically, there's actually, as I mentioned, a, a, a reduction in crime. Um, but the main thing that I really wanted to do this evening in addition to introducing myself is to just kind of let you guys know that it. You know, of the four remaining locations that we need to choose throughout the state, that if we do decide to come into, um. Wellington and again, we don't have a, a set location nailed down at this point in time or anything, but that, you know, we really want to. Become part of the community, um, and have a positive impact and just kind of really immerse ourselves, um, in the community. Uh, and there was something else that I had. Kind of jotted down. And, and so I, and I don't know if there's a little bit of confusion at this point in time, but, uh, Mike, you, you've done a tremendous job this evening, but. I'm not sure if something's maybe getting lost in translation with, um, some of the people who are attending this meeting this evening. But so yes, there's towns that can, hey, all the towns can now have an unlimited number, but it is at the town's discretion to. To determine, hey, we only want one and you can set that precedent and, and, um. Have that be the case. So it's essentially no max, but you have the right to determine the number of, uh. Low, um, facilities that are located in your town, um, with the licenses. Um, so. Uh, I, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me and, um, you know, if anybody has any questions or comments, um, I'm here and. I'll be here going forward as well, um, if anybody wants my email. And again, I can, uh, provide literature as well to, um, kind of back up. Some of the things that I put out there tonight in terms of no negative impact on your community, um, and things of that nature. So thank you all for your time this evening.
No, thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Walter.
Yep. Joe, did you have your hand up?
No.
I thought I stopped. Any, uh, any further questions from, uh, the public? Yes, Kathy. You're, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry. Just, um, one other thing came to mind since we're talking about concentration of uses as well. It looks like we have something established to limit. The number, the total number of retailers to one, hybrid retailers to one and micro cultivators to one. Um, but we have nothing in this regulation that would limit the number of cultivators, which are the larger producers. That can have, they have to have at least fifteen hun- excuse me, fifteen thousand square feet of, uh, grow space. So that's another thing I would ask the commission to consider is, um, we do have a lot of. Very large commercial and industrial potentially, um, potential properties that could be used for this type of. Large growing facilities and, um, we may want to consider limiting the number of cultivators. Of that size in town. Thank you. Again, because of the use on, of water and the odor issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, any further questions from the public? All right, any further questions from the, uh, commission?
Are we voting on this tonight to adopt it or? Changes made to it. I'm sorry.
I, I'm not prepared to vote on it. I think I need to ruminate on this a little.
Yeah, um, if there's gonna be some changes made, uh, I, I echo Ralph's, uh, comment that the sign restrictions are really restrictive. Um, we might want to allow them a larger sign than, than something I would put in my front lawn for a political candidate.
So just to jump in on that, cause you reminded me, um, there were specific provisions within the bill which allow towns to regulate signage for these uses differently. So, um, again, it's just. A, a, a separate caveat for these types of uses. So, so yeah, they, it doesn't align with the signage regs though. We've talked about the fact that our existing signage regs are, um, in need of updates anyways, but. Again, this is a number which, which has been used elsewhere and, you know, there's a lot of people, whether the. You know, that have, have concerns about. Because we can't regulate what a sign says. The, the things that could ultimately be on that sign. Um, and so again, starting from a point of giving them the opportunity to regulate that, though. Yeah, I don't know what the, the total would be, but if you want to, if you want to look at something that is a little bit larger. Um, or you want to look at moving in the direction of creating. Uh, a, a specific generator like a, uh, half a square foot per linear foot of building front, you know. We can include the calculation rather than just the standard. Um, you know, whatever you guys are feeling comfortable with, I can start working on some tweaks.
I, I don't think you want a huge sign for this. I, I, I think that.
Not, not huge, but eighteen by twenty-four is.
I, I think that word will get around with the, where the place is and. People that are so inclined to go there and purchase will. I. Don't know that you want a giant sign with this on it.
It's also not drive-by business. Most of their model is appointment. Um, so you're not necessarily having people. That the total, you know, totality of their business is not just, you know, drive by, I think I'll pop in. In most cases, it's, it's an appointment. They know how many appointments they have for the day. It's the access. Is, is very limited. They have very strict protocols on keeping track of who comes into the store. How frequently, how many times they come in over a period of time. So. They're not necessarily relying on someone driving by and seeing it, but they're, as much as they are the geographic location, if that makes any sense.
Ralph, you had your hand up first.
I do. We had a discussion a while back about logos versus actual signs. We had a discussion a while back about logos versus actual signs. Is a
You're talking about the truck stop.
I'm I'm not going to specifically name anything, but you can read it. You can read into that whatever you'd like, Walter. What if? Yeah, what if you had a someone who decided to paint the building with a nice six-foot-tall marijuana leaf on the outside? Is that a sign? Well, no, don't no text, just a marijuana leaf.
No.
Think about that. So they could they could do that.
The only thing in the state of Connecticut that planning and zoning commissions can regulate is commercial speech.
You can't regulate appearance of a building. Sure, you can. Not prescriptively. Now, you can't be too too specific, but you you can establish constraints on building sizes and building features. Anyway, just food for thought, guys.
All right. Eric, I see your hand up. You're muted.
Yep. Yes, sir. Thank you, Walter. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure that there is some sort of a state legislation in place that cannot be overridden, that you cannot display a cannabis leaf as advertisement. And something interesting happened yesterday, which is that Governor Lamont actually tweeted out some video in regards to Connecticut, and he himself, who really pushed hard to get that instituted, actually displayed a leaf in his video. So he is under a little bit of fire from some people in regards to that because he pushed so hard. So I don't think that you could actually paint a a a large cannabis leaf on the side of the building, and that's not something that we would be looking to do. And then so something that I think is important to keep in mind as well is that Connecticut will be allowing delivery. So I think there will be some initial inquisitiveness from people to come and see the location. But then after that, you know, that will kind of die down. And then I would imagine a lot of people will be going the route of of receiving receiving it via delivery. So I just wanted to make that known as well in case there were some people that were unaware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right. Any further?
Yeah, if I might. So most of the grow facilities are use a drip irrigation system for application of water. So the amount of water that's being used is is regulated. The amount of fertilizer that goes into these number of ways of fertilizing, either through water soluble fertilizers, concocted composts, or through fertilizer pellets that are slow release. One of the things that also that Kathy had mentioned was obviously, the fertilizer and pesticides. They can't use toxic chemicals on something that's being consumed. And the only thing that you that we might want to consider is
They use toxic chemicals on vegetables and wash it off?
Only in Mexico.
Here, too.
And the only thing that we might think about adding is any large grow operation, not to let them compost their spent soil balls on site, get that taken off away from the grow facility. That's those are only my few comments.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone, public or commission? All right. What do you think, Mike? We at the point where we'll close this?
Well, if you want me to prepare tweaks.
Let's leave it open.
Yeah, if I mean, I I have some of a sense of some of the things that we can tweak, but certain things like what does the commission think about the word adjacent and the two hundred and fifty foot versus five hundred foot? You know, if you guys have some thoughts on on how you you would want that to to be tweaked at all? Do you want to include the automatic expiration? Or do you want to take that out so that does that cap doesn't expire? You know, if there's a couple of things that we've kind of gone both ways on. So just so I can prepare something that is more aligned with what you're thinking, if you guys have any sense of how you're leaning, it would help me make these changes.
I I personally think it should, if we have a liquor store that needs five hundred feet. Yeah, this is a this is a mind altering substance, just like alcohol. Why? Why? Why alcohol and not this?
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree.
As well. I would agree as well.
They should. They should be. They should match.
Yeah, and five hundred feet isn't onerous, so.
Do you want to include the five hundred foot separating dishes for all uses or just the uses specified?
I think, you know, liquor store is a retail establishment. You know, what what would we do if somebody had a liquor warehouse here in town? Like it's like a distribution center for liquor. What would the rule be for that, Mike, in current regulation?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't know a liquor distribution. I mean, I think that inherently, I mean, the one thing that's different about this is that we are we are really regulating the the product, right? We're saying it's retail, but because it's cannabis retail, we regulate it differently. We call it cultivation, or, you know, we we call it, you know, industrial production, right? It's an industrial property. It'll look exactly the same as every other industrial use, but because the thing they're growing inside is cannabis and not food, or, you know, some other type of of product, we regulate it differently. So it's it's challenging.
I think the five hundred, just me personally, I'm just thinking out loud, would probably apply to, you know, the 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 hybrid facility, the the retail. It's something where people would be actually going there, possibly purchasing it and and so forth. I think it would fit better with that. That's probably the point with a liquor store, too. Ralph, like with his hand up, he's got something to say. Come on, Ralph. Ralph. You're muted. You're muted, Ralph.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot that.
Right.
Mind a little detail. When you go to section fourteen and your zoning regulations, fourteen point oh two talks about the separation distance of five hundred feet in a direct line between any part of a permit premises and any part of a lot used or reserved to be used for primary or secondary school, hospital, library, or place of worship. And that restriction does not apply to class four and class five permits. Now, those permits, of course, vary depending upon what they are. And I think that the restriction applied to yes, class two, a manufacturer permit or a warehouse. So you couldn't put a liquor warehouse within five hundred feet of a school.
All right. So what we should do, thanks, Ralph, for
I I think you need to be careful on that. And by the way, one one last thing, Public Act twenty-two dash one oh three does allow the municipality to amend its zoning regulations to prohibit establishment of cannabis establishments. It's section nine twenty-two, twenty-one A dash four two two F was repealed, and this was substituted in its place. The municipality may, by amendment to such municipality zoning regulations, or or by local ordinance, item one, prohibit the establishment of a cannabis establishment. So I think that information was incorrect. That's all.
So the yes, you can do it by zoning, but to create a townwide prohibition, you have to do it by ordinance only. So if we prohibit the establishments, it will not prohibit the consumption or possession on town parks, schools, et cetera. So to prohibit the substance townwide, you can only do it by ordinance. That that's the I'm trying to make a distinction there. I'm not saying that that we would have to ask the Board of Selectmen to take this up if the commission wanted to just prohibit the use, but we can't regulate possession here.
I understand that. I know. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mike. I just want to make sure the commission was clear on what they can and can't do.
We've had some questions about it, just, you know, people in general, trying to understand the law. And so just, you know, for the people in attendance at the meeting or whatever, no matter what we do here, it will not affect what people can or cannot do in town parks and open spaces. And so I don't want people to think that whatever way this goes here, it's going to have a ripple effect in that direction. That's something that the Board of Selectmen has to do.
Understood.
All right. So, Mike, the thought is we'll leave this meeting open.
Yep.
Public hearing open.
So I can, we can, I'll go through basically the comments and try to get things tweaked. I'll adjust the five hundred foot distance to to be reflective. And I think it sounds like we want to do that for everything.
Yes, it needs to be consistent with what we're doing with later.
So we don't, we want that to apply to cannabis establishments, period, not just those mentioned.
Yes.
It seems like not quite at a point of consensus on signage. Do we have a thought as to whether we should remit leave the automatic expiration and repeal in, or or do you want to take that out? It doesn't, that part's not crucial, but.
Why don't we just cap it at one? That's it. One each.
Well, that's that's what that section does right now, right? So if we just take out the auto repeal, then we're done.
Correct. I I say we take it out.
Is there a reason we want to limit it to to one cultivation facility? Because a couple of warehouses cultivating marijuana could also add to the tax base here in town.
Yeah, so the the reason that those three are in there is because obviously the retail component is the one that's thought to generate the most interface with the public. So if you're if you're talking about traffic and those types of things, and then the micro cultivators, being that they are inherently smaller in footprint, they, in theory, will be easier to establish. Because if you need a smaller space, you you have more space that that potentially is accessible to you versus the larger buildings. So we can keep it at the three, and that wouldn't prohibit the cap on the others, or we can take take that out and have it apply to one per twenty-five thousand for each.
I I'd be fine with one on with one each on the retail side, but I would like to see us attract more cultivators if it's possible. That's all. That's my thought.
I haven't got a problem with that, John.
I I think I like what we have.
And that that's what we have now is one one each on the retail side and just leave the cultivators out of it. Out of the, you know, no limit on cultivators.
Well, right now, we'd limit the micro, but we wouldn't limit the straight cultivator.
Right. I'm sorry, the large cultivators, we wouldn't limit. That's that's my point.
Okay, so we'll pull out, we'll pull out B and leave that on the books so that it doesn't it doesn't repeal. All right, so we can, if you keep it open and continue it to the next meeting, I can, I'll work up a red line to show you kind of what the tweaks are based upon the comments at this meeting. If anybody has any questions or whatever, you can let me know, and I can at least get it reflected, you know, for for consideration. We obviously did the the referral to CROG and no substantial, no substantial issue there. The only thing that I would sort of mention is that we don't want to get caught in between the chicken and the egg without having anything on the books. So if you have thoughts or anything that comes to mind in between, and you want to get in touch with me so I can try to deal with this between now and the next meeting, help us get this reg, you know, as close as possible for that, so that we don't have to continue it too long without having anything effective.
On the on the signage side of things, can we just defer to our current sign regulations? Or like you said, they're in need of an update? Should we revisit those?
That's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, the content neutral sign stuff with Reed Gilbert and and some of the other cases makes revising the sign recs a little bit trickier. But yeah, I mean, I think what we can do is if you if we really think that we don't like the eighteen by twenty-four and we want something larger, then I would say for the purposes of this, we we figure out what that is and and just include it so that we don't have to rely on another set of revisions in case we get something in the short term under this reg.
Okay. Not being an expert on signage, but there is somebody here who wants to open a retail shop. Eric, would you mind commenting on what kind of a a size of a sign that you would want to use on an establishment such as the one you want to want to open?
To be honest, John, I I couldn't tell you that right right now. That's that would be a little more high level, something for the the head of our group to to say. I I don't think it would be anything that would be standing out above and beyond anything else that's that's currently located in whatever area that we would settle in.
All right. It just that the my concern was that an eighteen inch by twenty-four inch sign was too small for for most businesses.
So that is, is that how it's currently written, that that's what's currently permitted? Yeah, I I appreciate you advocating for that to potentially be larger, John. Yeah, I would think that we might want to go a little bigger than that. At the same time, you know, I we don't really want any special privileges above and beyond any other business that's currently located in your town as well. Is it? Is that something that we can maybe table, and I could bring it back to the head of our group and kind of get his thoughts on that and and come back to you guys in regards to that?
We're going to have, we're going to continue this public hearing. So, you know,
Yeah.
Some thoughts on it. It wouldn't hurt to express them.
Yeah, in in regards to cultivation, I don't know, you know, none of us know what the future holds, but initially it will be difficult for you guys to attract cultivators, potentially micro cultivators you could attract. But so initially, the state is only giving out six cultivator licenses, to to my knowledge, to the best of my understanding from what what I read recently. And all of those are large companies that paid three million dollars each to bypass the lottery, and those businesses have to be located in a disparate, what they call a disproportionately impacted area. So I believe they received forty-one of those applications, which is more than we anticipated. But they're going to select six of those, but all of those cultivators have to be located in a DIA, in a disproportionately impacted area. So they're not actually giving out any cultivation licenses initially through the lottery. But they are anticipating more rounds of the lottery. So no one really knows what what will happen with that going forward. But in in twenty twenty-two, I would say that it it would be impossible, even though I don't like that word, impossible, for a cultivator to come into town. But again, who knows what happens with fucking rounds in the lottery. Yep.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
With that in mind, then, do we want to have With that in mind, then, do we want to, uh, have unlimited licenses for micro cultivators in town? Since they still will bring in tax base, correct?
No, I don't. It, you know, I, I think we need to have a discussion as a commission. I, I, I think we need to feel, uh.
All right, then, if we leave the regs at one each, I'm, I'm good with that.
I, I didn't come prepared to rewrite the regs tonight. I came prepared to listen to a public hearing and, uh, you know, we had quite a bit of discussion on those regs and. You know, doing it on the fly is not, not the way I want to do it. I, I think it, I think it needs discussion amongst us, you know, and, uh, reflection.
I agree.
The other thing that I think is worth mentioning is if these regulations get passed perhaps with this cap. And a year or two from now, Wellington has one in operation and we determine. It's not really a big deal, then we can, we can do a text amendment at that point to re- remove the restriction or or vice versa, but. You know, we can always revisit this, you know, at a later date, once, one, if and when we ever have one op- in operation and we start to understand. How this is going to look, that the Connecticut law for this is not written as a carbon copy of the Massachusetts law. So like, we can't just look to what happened there and say, okay, that's what will happen here. There's le- total and and. There are less than two hundred operations en masse. Um, so, you know, we're not looking at having thousands of these things statewide, but we just don't know where they're going to land, so we can always revisit it.
A quick question, Mike. If, uh, an operation was, a retail operation was going to establish themselves, say in the old bank building at Phelps. Uh, their signage would be more than two feet long, correct?
I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, you know, all those businesses down there, the signs that they have indicating what business it is. That's, it's, 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 they're larger than two by, uh.
It was eighteen by twenty-four. Yeah, obviously the easy thing to do with the signage, you know. Would be to mirror our existing sign regulations.
I think so, I really do. Otherwise, it's a can of worms. You don't want to get into that.
Okay. That we can do. All right, so I will work up some, some changes to this based on the discussion here and prepare a, a new draft. That the commission can consider.
And so you send that to us ahead of time too, please, Mike.
Yep. Do you want me to? Is there anybody else that, I mean, we, we've talked about Board of Selectmen, which I mentioned, but I, I mean, I'm happy to follow up with them. And just basically provide them with a copy of the, of the draft. I mean, is there anything else that? You want me to do as far as homework? That you feel has been.
How big a deal would it be to have the land use attorney take a look?
Um, I mean, it's not a big deal. We, I, I would send it to them. They, they would do a review and bill us for however long it took.
That, in my opinion, might be a good thing.
Yeah, I can send it to them. I'll, I'll, um, tell them that we're, we're targeting. The next meeting and see if they can, if they can get something turned around.
Now, I may not be at the next meeting, Mike. I, I have a business trip. I have to go on up to Manchester, New Hampshire.
So.
Then, then we're in the same boat with the, um. Zoning application that we deferred to the twenty-first. At the last meeting. It'll be another, yeah, we're gonna bite at that apple, but Walter's not going to be here for it.
Yeah, my problem is the class I'm in doesn't end until about six o'clock and then, you know, there's a dinner planned and everything. I, I just don't see myself getting out of that quick enough.
Yeah, so we just have to make sure that between the other folks that are here, we'll have a, a quorum, people ready to go.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
So if anybody else, you guys, I mean, so we opened the public hearing tonight, you have sixty-five days. Well, sixty-five days, open thirty-five days. Plus the timing and extensions, and we've got enough time, so if, if for some reason you felt like you, you wanted to push this off. Longer or or you get to the next meeting and, you know, Walter really would like to participate. We can, we can move it. I mean, we have plenty of time in the statutes. So that we don't have to make a decision at, at the twenty-first, um, so we don't need to decide that now, but just know that we have time if you. Decide you don't want to do anything with it on the twenty-first.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to continue, uh, public hearing, PZ dash twenty-two dash nine to our next, uh, meeting. Date, twenty-first, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. No new business tonight, so we're on to item F, unfinished business, affordable housing plan.
So, uh, a month ago, or the, or the, our last, our first meeting in, in May, I think it was, yeah, we, we sent out. Basically a, a draft of what we have now, based on all the meetings and discussion that we've held to date. The. When we talked about it, based on what we had on the agenda, the commission basically said that we want a little more time to just look at it, digest it, and so. I said we just carry this discussion over if anybody had questions or comments. Now, um, if you're still working through it, we can keep it on till the next meeting. We've, I've, so the statute required it to be adopted June first, but if you don't adopt it June first, you have to basically notify DOH. As to why, so. We've already sent them notification that we, we, we're essentially working on it and, um. That we'll have it adopted, so there's no penalty, we're not subject to anything, no one's going to find us or say you're not eligible for grants, so if you guys feel like you still need more time. We're not under any statutory time clock like we would be a public hearing.
Didn't we want to have a public hearing with it?
So, yeah, so the goal would be to have the commission get the plan to a point where they feel like it, it makes good sense, and then when we have. A tentative draft of the whole thing, we would, we would schedule a, a public hearing to solicit actual feedback, but we.
Did you get, did you guys discuss this the last meeting?
No.
All right, I didn't think so. I, I, I briefly hit the minutes, uh. Okay. So what was the plan for tonight? Were we gonna?
I think, well, at least my understanding would be if anybody had questions or comments, we would go over them, but if people needed more time. We would, we would just leave it on the agenda and. Try to take it up at a, at a subsequent meeting. I know it's obviously a little bit longer than your standard application, so it's, it's not as quick to go through.
Anyone have any questions?
Mike, I for, I forgot to send you my comments. Um, um, I'm trying to make my comments less cryptic, cryptic, and I'll, I'll email them to you. They're mostly questions for, just for information.
Just looking at the fact that, you know, Walter may not be available and we have two public hearings pending. Do you want to, as a group, maybe say? That we'll take this up for, for sort of a fruitful discussion at the first meeting in July or, or second meeting in July to give you some.
I think it should be the first meeting in July. I think, I think we need to get this over the.
Okay, so if you have comments or questions, get them to me and I'll start working through that like, like, um, Doug mentioned, and then. We'll plan on putting it on the agenda, uh, two meetings from now for an actual discussion and we can kind of go through it and see where things stand. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense.
We'll do it.
All right, on to approval of minutes, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move the, accept the minutes as written.
Oh, second.
All in favor, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting, but.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, review of March first and March fif- uh, fifteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
So, and Walter, I, I know you said you looked at the minutes, but at, at the last meeting, um. There was a question about the.
I did see a comment from somebody about that, so what, let's get into what the issue is.
Yeah, it, so basically, um, if you look at the March first minutes, there was an application, there was a, a public hearing held. Um, related to, um, the text amendment application. The commission closed the, um, hearing. And then you look at the March fifteenth meeting minutes, it basically reflects the same thing, so. We reviewed the agendas and the recordings and that, the minutes are actually correct. The public hearing got carried over to the fifteenth, even though it was closed. So the minutes reflect what happened, and basically what it was is that. The, the hearing was closed and then we had, we, we took more comments. From a, from a regulatory perspective, we didn't run. A notice of decision after the first March first meeting and then held another on, basically unnoticed public hearing, we didn't. The notice of decision until that subsequent meeting. So the net result is essentially one additional meeting of public comment. There, there's no. Not to say it doesn't matter, because obviously you want to have things on the agenda, but it got carried over instead of. Uh, going to new business, it, it remained on public hearing, so. I don't think there's anything you need to do for the minutes because they reflect what happened. But there was some, some question about that at the last meeting, so that's.
How the heck did that happen? We closed a, a public hearing. And it shows that it's another public hearing on the same subject.
Yeah, I, I think that, and I, I don't remember specifically, but, um, I know that one of the recent meetings, we had some issues with. The actual agenda and, and getting it. Getting the document posted and what was on it, and I think that, uh, the previous one was grabbed and it just, it was missed. It was, it was an oversight. But in, in really thinking about the process and, and what happened. The, the only result was that the commission took more input. There was no decisions made in the interim. No notices run. So, so from a, from a regulatory perspective, you know, I don't think that. It's a really, um. You know, I, I don't think it affects anything that was done. I, I don't see this as a, a, a really big. Deal, obviously not something that you, you know, we want to strive for, but.
All right, so at, at this point, we don't need to do anything else.
Right, the notice of decision was run reflecting the final day. The, um. The minutes reflect what happened at the meeting, so the approved minutes are correct based upon what occurred at the meeting.
Okay. All right, so on to item H. Correspondence, Town of Mansfield referral.
So this is just a, a referral of an application that they're, they're sending to us. I don't know if anybody looked at or has any specific questions, but under certain criteria, we're required to provide. Uh, notice to adjacent municipalities, and there's a number of checkboxes in the statute, which explains when that needs to happen. But it's a, it's a amendment to the zoning regulations. To create, um, mixed-use center transition zoning district. And so Mansfield, the statutes were changed to reduce the requirements where things needed to go to each individual adjacent municipality. And it was changed to now have to go to CROG. You only have to notify the direct butter if you're approving a development. Which is within a specific proximity and you're dealing with traffic or other things and have that offsite. Potential impact. They, they notify everybody is, even though they indicate that it's not required, so. This is an opportunity for, for the town, if there was something you had concerns with, for us to basically participate in the public hearing.
All right, anyone have any comments on that one, questions? All right, I think we're good. All right, item I, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Anyone from the public, uh? Have any comments?
Walter.
Yes, Ralph.
Um, reg- regarding revisions or additions to regulations. I, I sense. A, a, a extreme confidence in Mr. D'Amato and his skill set and his knowledge. Uh, but I don't know that Mike has passed the bar. And I think that it's appropriate when you're writing new laws, regulations, if you will. Uh, that they be run by a land use attorney just to make sure all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed. And all the gotchas in the regulations have been, uh, hopefully discovered.
We brought that up on the last one, they are going to run it by the land use attorney.
On, yes, from tonight's discussion.
And, and some of the others should be as well. I, I agree.
Yes, um, as anyone who's been on this commission for any length of time knows. You will never understand exactly how your regulations work until you have to apply it to a for-real application. And that's when you're going to find out where your shortcomings are, and it's always good to have a second set of eyes. Looking over the regulations before that happens. Um, you may not catch everything, but I think it's a, just a good practice.
No, that, that's a good comment, Ralph, and yes, as a matter of practice, from it, we, we usually did for many years have the land use attorney check things, particularly new. Things we were doing, so.
I, I just think it's good practice.
There is no downside other than we have to pay the attorney.
But it may be money worth, well, worth spent.
I agree.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Yep. All right, item J, staff report and discussion, hybrid meetings.
So this came up at the last meeting as well, um, just.
I saw that from Erica, right?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, we've gotten, um, questions or comments or statements, you know, either both, sort of both ways from folks. Some have been, you know, we want to meet in person or not from the commission, I mean, from, from residents, you know, we. And others have been. We, you know. I think particularly with the meeting, uh, the last meeting, given the number of people, I think we had sixty-plus people on that call and, and we would not have. Obviously been able to accommodate if all of them had shown up, but also.
We could have moved the meeting to the town hall, though, the old town hall or something, though, if we wanted to accommodate that many.
Yeah, we had some folks. Called to confirm that there was going to be virtual component because they're not yet comfortable with being in a. A space with that many people and in close proximity, so. Um, you know that the law basically legitimizes virtual and hybrid meetings. And the, the commissions can, can make those decisions on a meeting by meeting basis. One of the things that is a good. Practice, I think, is just for consistency with how we deal with the actual meeting itself, is that if we're going to have a meeting that includes. An in-person component that we try to make sure that we have a quorum of the commissioners in the same place. But. I think that the sense from this board was that we want to move in that direction, so. We're in a good spot now. We have the application that we're currently dealing with, which was noticed. Under our current format, which is virtual, but I think we're in a position where if we get new applications moving forward, when we have those hearings, we can. We can notice those accordingly as hybrids, if that's what you're interested in.
Let, let me ask a question, Mike. All the other commissions in town, for the most part, Board of Select, and the Board of Selectmen, what are they doing right now? They're having in-person meetings, many of them are, right?
Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, I think, are hybrid. Wetlands were virtual, DBA meets very infrequently. Um, the, the last one was virtual, I'm not sure on, on others, but, you know, for us. I guess similar to, I don't know how Board of Finance necessarily works, but because we noticed the hearing so far out. We have to know a little bit in advance versus just holding the meetings. But. But, yeah, I think that the regulatory bodies are moving in the direction of hybrid.
I I I give you my opinion. I I I strongly prefer to have an in-person meeting, particularly with the things we deal with. I strongly prefer to have the public in front of us and and actually look at them for real when we're talking about these different things. Because some of it, you know, involves change and impact of the town. I I I am sympathetic, you know, to the people that aren't ready yet. But we're we're over two years into this now, and uh I prefer to have a hybrid where we're we're sitting down there. Again, but, you know, I'm not the guy that deciding for the entire commission with this. I I think these meetings are lacking something. I I really do.
It's not the same.
It's not the same as when we used to meet in person, and and I get why. But I I I'm not gonna be the only one sitting down there with you, though, Mike, like we did that one time. We tried. That was embarrassing.
I would, I would. I wouldn't mind having a hybrid meeting at this point.
And 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 you know what? I'm I'm not ridiculing anyone's concerns or anything. I I get it, you know, if somebody's concerned and they have their reasons, but.
Yeah.
I think we should try, you know, and and there has to be at least four of us down there if we're gonna do it.
So when you say hybrid, are you talking about online and in person or just in person?
Yes, I think, you know, I think we kind of have to do that a bit, because, you know, some of the public may not feel comfortable. Coming down, maybe one of the commissioners, certainly if somebody feels more comfortable, if we're sitting down in the building and they want to wear a mask, that's their business. Even though they they don't require it anymore down there, it's, we we all go out these days, you know, you go shopping, whatever, you see a, you see a mixed bag.
Yeah, so just to confirm on the town hall side, the statute now, i- if we have. An in-person meeting and a member of the commission, for whatever reason, it could be, I'm traveling for work. Requests a virtual accommodation, the law requires the town to make that accommodation, so for us. With having these things scheduled so far in advance, we would be silly to not do hybrid, because if somebody says, geez, I can't make it. You know, you lose the position of quorum. Um, so I just assume we would schedule these things as hybrid. Um, I think we've talked about it, but um, you know, Wellington. Uh, I, when we do these recordings, I I post the recordings for all the commissions that I am involved with on the town's YouTube channel. And um, I was looking at the the stuff recently and our our views, um. The total times that all of the videos on the town's website have been, or on the YouTube channel have been viewed. Um, are around ten thousand. Um, we have some videos that, you know, not just this commission, with hundreds and hundreds of people that have viewed them, so. People are certainly consuming the digital information, but we we can con- continue to accommodate that by just running everything hybrid.
We have to remember also, if you get a large turnout. In order to run a hybrid meeting and ha- it, the only place that's wired is the town office building.
But the other, the upstairs area has more seating.
It does, right.
Upstairs.
Yes.
We could run them and, yeah, both, both of those rooms in the town hall have those components. We could, we could run it.
Alright, well, it, I'm, I'm a fan of doing hybrid, and you know, obviously the rest of the commission has to speak for themselves.
I'm in for hybrid.
Alright, how about uh, how about the other, how about uh you, Andy, Doug, Joe?
Yeah, maybe it's a good idea.
I'm fine, Walter.
And I get it, like, if somebody's traveling for business and they want to participate or whatever, that that's great, you know, it gives you an option. Like, I I'm gonna bring my laptop, obviously, I'm gonna have it with me next, uh, you know, next meeting. If I do have time, I will come to the meeting. If I'm not tied up, I will let you know ahead of time.
Okay, so what we'll do is, for the next, you know, whenever we get our next application and we start. Talking with the applicant and and scheduling legal notices, we'll start referencing hybrid. Um, so that'll be, you know, whenever that next application comes in, we have this one, which has already been scheduled for the next meeting. Which is, which is scheduled as virtual, but moving forward, we'll start advertising both options.
Okay, I I I think that's fair.
Sounds good.
And and you know, gives people some options and uh. You know, so it's some of the meetings we used to have, we'd get quite a few members of the public, and you know, obviously times have changed a bit, but you know, some of the folks, I don't think are. That comfortable on the technology, and so maybe we'll see some of those people too, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
I didn't already mention about the library. You used to have them in the library. Is that off the table? Is that not wired?
I I don't know that. Um, I know that when we did, when we did the retrofitting of town hall, it was for those two, the two systems that we have.
We can ask, right? We can ask. That that's a pretty good-sized room down there in in the basement of the library, so.
And everyone knows where it is. It's a lot of.
Alright.
Lot of good, lot of synergy there, I think.
It's walking distance for me and Rebecca.
That there's a plus right there.
Look at you, Andy. You got your boat in the background, you're.
I know, huh?
Alright.
Got water this year, too.
Nice. Alright, so I I think we have a plan there. Anyone else have anything before we adjourn?
No.
Alright, it's nine oh six PM, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.